Are you here? We good in the live pressing? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll start with the roll call. Van, you want to lead us up?
Sure, Van Ray, board member.
General Sprague?
Yeah, Joe Sprague, Department of Marine Resources.
Colby?
Colby Williams, Secretary of State's Office.
Caitlin Wallace, Outdoor Stewardship Trustee.
Ricky Flatt, Executive Director.
David Holman, Chairman.
Allison Cruz, Board Member.
Peyton Lockey, Board Member.
Tyler Russell, DFA.
Pamela Ratt, Attorney General's Office.
Lauren Williams, DFA.
Ed Denny, Outdoor Stewardship Office.
Okay. All right, did anybody get a chance to look over minutes?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes from office to there.
The motion, Peyton, do I get a second?
Second.
Second with Allison? Okay. Has everybody looked over today's agenda?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this agenda. Allison.
Motion, Allison?
Second.
Second, Peyton? Approved? Old business, we have none, so we're doing the record. All right. Thanks everybody for coming. Outdoor stewardship is getting busy. And we've got a lot going on and we'll give you a little bit of a report, some of the activities that are going on before we get to the actual budget report. We are in our fourth application cycle that is open right now. It opens on August 1st. And the deadline will be Friday, September 19th. And we have received our first set of applications without any complications. And I think we have four or five that have already completed and submitted. And we have about 34 that we know of that are in process at this point. Virtually daily, getting, having conversations either through email or phone calls from various entities. So I'm encouraged by the interest that is out there even today. Got a phone call from someone who is just getting worried about outdoor stewardship and will be trying to get an application in. So we're encouraged by all that. I want to remind everyone that our next board meeting will occur on a Wednesday rather than Monday. It will be October 8th. And it will occur in the morning at 9:00 a.m. here at the Wolfhold Building on the third floor conference room. That will be done so that we can get our board meeting done prior to the Wildlife Mississippi's Project Tour of the Fannie Cook Natural Area. That is the project titled Coral River Source Water Protection and Recreation Project. That will take place, lunch will be provided by the MDWFP cooking team. And we're hoping to have a number of important visitors as well as policymakers join us. And it's going to be a good tour. This is the same project tour that we had scheduled for February this year that got postponed due to the weather, but I think it all works out better. We're working with Wildlife Mississippi, James Cummins and his bunch to get a good project tour ready for that event. So October 8th will arrive out there about 12 o'clock. We have the fall meeting of the Mississippi Secretary. I'm sorry.
Is the, is the meeting at 10?
Meeting will start at 9. Yeah, the board meeting will be at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
All right. The fall meeting of the Mississippi Secretary of State Conservation Task Force occurs on Tuesday, September 30th at the MDWFP Conference Room on Ridgewood Road, Eastover Drive, excuse me, Eastover Drive. That will be from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30. And Outdoor Stewardship will be presenting an update presentation there at that meeting. Hope everyone can attend that. Give you a little bit of some updates on the 2022 projects. We have two new extensions that will be presented to you today. So that will be, if those are approved, we will have of the 20 projects, six approved for project extensions. We have seven projects that are complete, three other projects that are writing their final reports right now. And then that gives us five additional projects that are on, on track to be completed October 10th. Those 2022 projects expire October 10th of '25. And all of those projects have been notified of the timeline that's at stake and getting their reporting and project completion expectations fulfilled. That leads us to the audit proposal update. And will we, that'll be showing up on the agenda here later on. We have, the AUP proposals have been provided for the board's review and the potential acceptance in today's meeting agenda. As far as the annual report goes, again, we have it drafted. Those, we'll be adding results from the latest quarterly reports. And also, we want to submit the findings from our AUP. So as soon as, hopefully, we can get that AUP completed and we'll have the results and findings from that bill that, including that annual report by the end of the year. That brings us to the budget report that you have in your folders. Again, I will start with the 2025 column. We have reported July's interest accruals of $150,013.27, bringing the total interest accruals of outdoor stewardship to $2,446,145.61. That brings our remaining interest balance to $727,015.10. In the 2022 cumulative to 25 column, project budget, $48,020,000. Awarded funds so far is $37,592,383.64. Reimbursements that have been processed, $5,443,555.47. The retention that has been withheld so far is $512,869.35. Reimbursements remaining, $31,635,958.81. Then you get down to the admin budget. The July interest accrual was $1,889.51. And admin funding expended for the year is $36,423.23, 25 cents. Admin funding remaining, $203,576.75. And then cumulatively, we have admin funding total is $980,000. Admin funding that has been expended, $404,967.74. Admin funding remaining, $575,032.26. And then the admin interest accrued total is $34,495.23. And that brings us to total unallocated project dollars to date with all the interest accruals balanced is $1,126,615.10. And that is available funding that could be used in the project awards coming up in this next round. Currently, processing of reimbursements have returned to normal promptness as well as our interest accruals reporting. And then you have your summaries of the projects, 2022, 23, and 24. And then at the piles, you can see what the funding remaining balances are by year and by each project. Anybody have any questions there? All right. That'll bring us to number three, the tab, third tab in your binder. That is the audit proposal. We did receive three proposals for our agreed upon procedures exercise and engagement. Thank you, engagement is the word I was looking for. And y'all have had those presented to you for review. The lowest bid comes in from Forbes Mazars. And the low bid there is a proposed fee for 2025, $9,000. 2026 is $9,500 and then 2027 to $10,000. These are proposals for three years of AUP engagement. And I did engage with Van Ray this last couple of weeks specifically. And he has gone over those and we made sure that everything is apples to apples in the proposals and it's good. And unless Van has some comments there, any questions that you have, I'll let you direct those to Caitlin. Do you have anything you want to add, Van?
They all look like standard engagement letters. And, you know, I knew basically three of the four people that were interviewing them. All of them are good, solid accounts. And I, I, I'll make a recommendation, recommendation that we accept the lowest bid, which would be Forbes, then engage those that firm to do the, the work.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I know them all and they're good.
Okay. We've got a motion from Van, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second Allison. Our Forbes Mazars. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passed. All right, we'll get to work on notifying Forbes and go on and work on the procedures to get that contract written up. I know, and I want to say with the perfect timing, that Caitlin has been working on this day and night since the proposals came in. And we already have all of our stuff ready to present. So that when they come onboard, they'll be able to look at everything. Everything's accounted for, so.
We are missing nothing, everything, our numbers and everything.
She's been a little stressed, but it has all been just fine. And I thank her for her hard work and we're ready to go through with that. All right. There's new business? All right. Under new business, under the reimbursement request, we have four. And under tab four, you will find a reimbursement request from the MDWFP. This is for the Improving Wildlife Habitats Statewide Collaborative Conservation Partnerships Project. And it's on the second page, you'll find September reimbursement request of $4,999. No match credit being presented with retention withheld. The reimbursement amount is $4,749.05. And any questions there? I'll move on to tab five, which is reimbursement request from the City of Diamond Head. This is by special attention. This is their last reimbursement request. This is their final report included. So this will be their retention release as well as the final submission of their match. This is the Noma Drive Boat Ramp Improvements at the City of Diamond Head. Approved match credit of $1,030,802.8. We will be releasing the retention of $25,000. And a special note, their match was actually increased from their proposal by $33,691.8.
That did include the final report behind Jones' documentation. So there's pictures and things if you want to look at this one and the next one. Anytime I'm releasing my attention.
I drove down to this project yesterday. We, they did ribbon cuts and we all attended and it looked great. Since then, they have added a cash launch.
Right.
Which is pretty nice and it looked great.
Right? They've done very well with their documentation. It's been very thorough and it took quite some time to get through a million dollars worth of match in one month reviewing those records, but it looked great. All right, moving to tab six. This is a reimbursement request on the Mississippi Delta Nature and Learning Center. This is the Youth Environmental Stewardship Program. Again, on to the second page. This also is a final report with this project from 2022. We will be releasing retention of $9,000. And again, with the match that they have submitted and been confirmed, they exceed the max proposal that they sent to us, $2,000, $2,065.64. And you have that final report as well in your, in your folder. Good project. All right, moving to project tab seven. This is a reimbursement request from the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks for Lake Monroe Kayak, kayak launch. Getting my tongue all twisted up. This reimbursement request is for $5,812.50. Match credit submitted and approved, $17,437.50. With retention withheld, the reimbursement amount is $5,231.25. That is the final reimbursement request or retention involved. You want to accept those for approval? Any discussion? We get a motion to approve?
I'm moving to approve the reimbursement request.
Has a motion from Peyton? Give me a second.
Second.
Second thousand? All four? Okay, nice that. All right, that moves us to tab number eight. This is a project amendment request. This is from the Clinton Community Nature Center. They're trying to get this final request in in order to get their final expenditures submitted to us in time for the project expiration date next month. And in there, they're asking to make some changes to categories within their budget. There is no budget increase requested in here. I highlight a few of the items in their amendment request. And that is that they have $5,490.97 left to spend through outdoor stewardship before October. They originally requested $2,000 for their conservation assessment fees with their environmental lawyer. They would like to reallocate $2,490.97 in funding from the conservation education to the conservation assessment to pay that lawyer $4,500 in fees. They're going to match the remaining difference. This would make their conservation assessment amount request from outdoor stewardship come to $4,490.97. And again, it mentioned that there is no request for increased funding. And they, let's see, we did not, they noted that they did not have an estimate for the conservation assessment when the original narrative and budget were submitted. And our fee is larger than expected. And with that, you see the original budget sheet that was submitted along with the amended budget sheet for your reference. They're adding that additional funds? No. Or they won't take it out? There's no, there's no additional funds being requested. They're just, they're just moving the categories between that educational resources and the dollar fees. Do you do anything on that? Yeah, it'll have to. Yeah, we have to address these individually for approval. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve.
Motion from Van, second Allison. All in favor? Hi. All opposed? Nice that. All right. Moving to tab nine under project amendment request. This is amendment request from the Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks. This is the wells for water fowl at Trim Cane Wildlife Management Area. The, to summarize, the changes there are that in the original proposal, there was a desire to install two new deep water wells on the property for pumping and flooding this, the series of water fowl impoundments there. And when the engineer from the water well company showed up, it became obvious to them that the two wells, though quite expensive, would not provide the volume of water necessary to conduct the flooding regime. And so they made a suggestion to them to amend that project from two deep water wells to two surface water pumps that will draw water from the nearby Trim Cane Creek. And there is no request for increased funding. They just want to go ahead and make note that these changes are going to be, be made to the, to the overall plan. So let me read some of the notes that are here. The two pumps will be installed on Trim Cane to allow for water to be pumped into the reservoirs as needed. After further engineering review is determined, the initial plans for wells would not be feasible due to the depth of water and would have to be pulled from 1,300 feet. The new plan would provide more reliable water at a faster rate, requiring less permitting and likely come to a cheaper cost. Electrical and irrigation would need to be ran similarly in the, as in the initial plans. So that is their request. You see some document, some documentation of the maps and the original project proposal. I'm fairly familiar with this project. And if y'all don't know where it is, this is just north of Starkville, Mississippi. It's in that eastern edge of the Mississippi Flyway as far as Mississippi and waterfowl go. It is fairly important for waterfowl in that part of the state that travel a ten time waterway and pass through that area going towards Knoxville National Refuge, down towards the Mobile Bay area. So it is important and it does have some selective waterfowl draw hunting opportunities at the area. And this area was developed for waterfowl impoundments back in the late 1990s. In fact, I was the one who bushhauled that entire property to get it ready for Ducks Unlimited to come in and do the survey work to build those impoundments. But a water source for the property has been very limiting. They've been having to rely on rainfall. And obviously, there are years it is complete failure because of that. And so this has been a plan to hopefully ever get a dependable source of water for the project.
Is the, is the creek sufficient enough?
Is the, is the creek sufficient enough?
Most times of the year, yes, it's like most other creeks that, and I think when I talked with MDWFP this morning, I think the way the permit reads is when, when the creek is sufficient elevations, they can draw from it. And I know that's part of the permitting process.
So a permit has been issued or?
I don't know if the permit has been issued, but it has been discussed, and they, they expect to have it approved. And Josh Morey was not able to be here today to get those questions. They have another staff meeting today. There's some additional information that MDWFP could provide. I know we had a conversation with Van this morning about it. Van, may, if you want to provide any comments, Van?
I sent Ricky an email last night and just, you know, well, wells are generally pretty expensive. And depending on how deep they are, they can get really expensive. But, you know, we're substituting two wells for two pumps. And, you know, I just, my thought would be that they provide us the documentation for what the wells were going to cost versus the two pumps. And just see if there's any material difference between the two wells and the two pumps. I'm not opposed to the pumps. It's probably a better, better, better option for. I do think the cost, because, you know, if there's excess money there, then they need to provide what they got to do with that.
You know, I agree, as the geologist of the group, the wells will be submitted. Especially if they can't repeat. Could you ask for some additional information and see if they get the permit?
Yes.
Dot some i's, across some t's and four. I'd like to table, I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion to table with Peyton?
My second, Allison.
And second, Allison. All in favor? Aye. And for clarification, we just want, the definite additional information we need is, is the differences in the cost and the, like, an express budget sheet difference, and then information about permitting.
Certainly a cost proposal on the pumps. Obviously, they had a cost proposal or something to establish this project. So at least look at the differences and the permitting process for drawing that. Where is the money going?
Right, and, and obviously, if their budget sheet. Go ahead, Van.
It's a $2 million project, and it's a $2 million project. They ought to have that information written, you know, pretty readily, but.
Okay, we will, we will get that information communicated to the MDWFP, and we'll table that one. All right, that moves us to other business in tab 10. This is a project amendment request for the city of Hattiesburg. This is the Sims Road River Access and Eco Tourism. This is a 2022 project. Quite honestly, they do expect to finish the project on time. But there are a few things, and with the time being pretty close, they wanted to go ahead and ask for a six-month extension to be sure they had time to get all their final expenses reported to us. So basically, in their request, they say, while we feel confident that the project will be completed by the original expiration date, the city wants to request an extension in the event that unexpected delays occur. While the city feels, that's the same thing. So with that request, their new expiration date would be April 10 of 2025, not October 10. They are very close to being finished. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Allison, you get a second?
Sir.
Second, Peyton, in favor? Aye. I said it. All right, moving to tab 11. This is another amendment request submission from MDWFP. This is for another 2022 project that is the forest management on state-owned WMAs. Reading from the request, we're asking for a three-month extension to complete the forest inventory crews on Phil Bryant WMA this spring. And early summer resulted in moderate flooding along the Mississippi River, which flooded a large portion of the WMA for an extended period of time. The waters have now receded, and inventory work has begun once again with fall and winter river levels normally low. The work should be completed within the three-month extension window. So they are asking for a three-month extension for that project, which would have a new expiration date of January 10, 2026, rather than October 10.
I make a motion to approve the extension.
Motion, Allison, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Peyton?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and going to tab 12 here. As y'all know, mistakes do happen. And last month, in some of our reimbursement notations, we had a couple of errors, and they have been corrected. You're seeing the first one with the city of Hattiesburg, the Sims Road River Access and Eco Tourism. We had a error where some numbers just looked too much alike and got put in the wrong place. They did receive their reimbursement that was approved, $13,293.92. However, that was not the entire reimbursement request. The actual reimbursement request was for $147,710.23, along with a match amount of $14,771.2. And so. And the re, so the reimbursement with, excuse me, yeah, the reimbursement amount was $132,939.29. So with the retention, we have made the corrections. And we talked with David Holman after we discovered this a couple of days afterwards. And they have now been reimbursed the difference of $106,351.37. So everything is corrected. We just wanted to bring that forward to you for transparency. And then there is an additional one with tab 13. There was, this is with the MDWFP Wild Pig Tracking Partnership. We just simply failed to get the match figures included on there. Y'all approved the reimbursement of $33,194.7. We just failed to get the match credit in there, and that was $41,572.9. Again, we got with David immediately and took care of all this. And so just for the record and putting it on the minutes, we want to be sure that has been correct. Any discussion? And we get a motion to approve those clerical errors.
Make a motion to approve those clerical errors.
Another motion?
My second.
We have a second. All in favor? I said it. I think that's it. Okay, just reminded that we have next month's board meeting on Wednesday, October 8. And it'll be here at nine o'clock in the morning. We'll be on the third floor. Ed, do you have anything we have? Anybody else?
Did you want to talk about, you mentioned about having a Zoom meeting for this group? After, was that after the applications come in?
Most likely, well, yeah, the applications end September 19. And then it'll take Ricky and I, and it'll go through extensively and review them all. We'll start making everybody's score sheets and getting every, we'll just be working for a little bit to get everything together. And then we'll probably have a Zoom meeting before the next board meeting. Or no, no, it'll be after, you know, October 8. So it may be in between October and November board meeting. But we have just a Zoom meeting where we can kind of explain to y'all how y'all are going to be receiving these score sheets and, and how y'all are going to be able to score them, and then what we get everything to y'all, just kind of a walk.
We could set it up to where anybody who wants to come in person can come in person, obviously. And if you want to do it remotely, we can. You know, we got a number of new board members that haven't been through this scoring process before. And I think you're going to be very impressed with it. And it would be very simple. It just takes a long time to go through each of these projects. And we are already, as these applications are coming in, we're going through them individually, checking for things that we think that the board may have questions about. If their information is not clear, if there's something missing. That's one of the things we check for particularly is like their budget sheets. If they submit a budget without using our bu, budget template, sometimes the information they provide is not going to be providing everything we want. And so once, as they come in, if I see issues, I'm communicating back with them immediately. So that they can start the process of getting that information back to us. So we can have all the applications finalized and ready to submit to everyone for score.
We'll probably know about a week ahead of time before we need to have that Zoom meeting. We'll kind of know we're wrapping things up and go ahead and send out invites and get with all y'all and schedules, so.
And if, if we have trouble getting dates for everybody that can do it, we'll be glad to meet with anybody individually otherwise. So we'll, we'll get it all done.
We won't be bogged on anything, just kind of walking through stuff.
All right. We get a motion to this name?
Our motion.
Second motion, you got a second, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.